Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome those that are here in person and those that are joining us virtually for the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen's regular meeting on February 6, 2025. So those that are able, if you could join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tierney, any additions or changes to the agenda?
There is none, Mr. Chairman.
They just, actually, for the record, for those that are watching us, we have a a full contingent of board members. We, Tiffany and Claudia are joining us virtually and they'll obviously be participating. And then the balance of the board is here at the town hall, just to make sure what Tiffany and Claudia recognized. So I just wanted to make that note. So Tiffany, Claudia, any changes, additions to the agenda? You, gentlemen?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. That moves us to four on the agenda, which is our public comment. The section of the agenda, excuse me, is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should simply make arrangements through the Town Manager's Office. Obviously, you can contact me directly or any, actually, any member of the Board. And we would be happy to address your concerns or your comments individually. And anybody that's remote and wants just to comment, simply type comment and your name in the chat box and Donna will recognize you. Donna, is there anybody remotely that? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Sue Smallidge. I'm here as a resident of Hebron and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for C.O.D., Coalition on Diversity and Equity.
Excuse me, one second. Did you want to, should she stand up here so the post can see you?
This way, the microphone here.
No, wait. Everyone can see you. I'm sorry, but just so everyone can see you. I apologize.
So I'm here as a private citizen of Hebron and as a member of the Board of Trustees of C.O.D., the Coalition on Diversity and Equity. And we're hoping that you will consider a letter that we sent requesting an economic survey or study of the Village Square District to update it. And in so doing, that letter had points, you know, that we felt were important to consider when that study is done. Hopefully, it will be done. And and so it needs to be updated, not only because of economic and democratic demographic conditions have changed and because the town now owns a large portion of the district, but also because of the identified need for more housing choices in our town. And I didn't see it as a clear item on your agenda, so it could be under correspondence. I just wanted to be here to let you know that, you know, we'd like to work with you on this and and we hope that it will go.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mel Lecter, 62 Wellwood Road. I'm here just as a member or a, an observer of the RAM Board of Education negotiations with the RAM Education Association. I just want to let you know that the the agreed upon contract is in the town clerk's office for your review if you're interested. That's it.
Thank you.
And if you need any other information, just contact.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments. And that moves us to section five, which is good to know and special recognition, Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we had, we had prepared a proclamation, but I think, I think Claudia had also possibly wanted to have one. I don't think we received Claudia's, but I'll leave it up to the Board of which, how you want to proceed. Or maybe Claudia wants to speak to that.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, it's Claudia Riley. There was a 2025 African American History Month Proclamation submitted to the town. So I'm not sure, Donna, if that one was received or if the one that was provided with the agenda is that one or is this another one?
This is the one that we prepared in the manager's office. I didn't receive another one.
I don't believe, I didn't.
This is a 2025 proclamation, but
Okay.
You have that. Would you like, are you comfortable reading it?
Sure. All right. So I will go ahead and read the 2025 Town of Hebron African American History Month Proclamation. All right, here we go. Whereas Black History Month, which began in 1926 as Black History Week, is a celebration initiated by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, noted Black scholar, historian, and son of former slaves. And whereas in 1976, as per the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month. And Americans of all walks of life have come together since then during the month of February to honor the accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas Black culture is American culture and Black stories are essential to the ongoing story of the United States. And whereas Hebron played a remarkable role in both preventing a local enslaved couple from being sold and providing a welcoming community for freed slaves to live, work, and educate their children here and after the Civil War. And whereas Black people have achieved triumphs, successes, and progress as seen in the end of chattel slavery, dismantling of Jim Crow segregation in the South, increased political representation at all levels of government, desegregation of educational institutions, and the passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, among other notable accomplishments. And whereas it is essential that we take time to celebrate the immeasurable contributions of Black Americans, honor the legacies and achievements of generations past, and continue to address and work towards reversing injustices of the past. And whereas the 2025 Black History Month theme, African Americans and Labor, focuses on the various profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experiences of Black people. Indeed, work is at the very center of much of Black history and culture, be it at the traditional agricultural labor of enslaved Africans that fed low country colonies. Debates among Black educators on the importance of vocational training, self-help strategies and entrepreneurship in Black communities, or organized labor's role in fighting both economic and social injustice. Black people's work has been transformational throughout the United States, Africa, and the diaspora. Now, therefore, we, the Hebron Board of Selectmen, proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month and recognizes, appreciates, and honors African Americans for their leadership, commitment, and vision to improving the health, well-being, and safety for all who live in the town of Hebron. We encourage community members to observe Black History Month and to recognize how diversity strengthens our community and improves the quality of life for us all.
Thank you, Claudia. I appreciate that. And Andy, anything else under the potential special recognition?
No, that was it. We had.
Okay. Thank you. So that moves us, Mr. Tierney, to six for those following the agenda, appointments and resignations.
Yes, in the agenda packet, item six is appointments and resignations. Item A is the Green Committee resignation attached to the letter from Caitlin Hershey, resigning her position on the Hebron Green Committee, and a proposed motion follows.
Thank you. Tiffany, would you be so kind as to read the proposed motion?
Certainly. Moves that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Caitlin Hershey from the Hebron Green Committee with regret and thanks for her many years of dedicated service to the town of Hebron.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Oh, of course.
I just want to say that this is indeed a regrettable loss for the town. I've known Caitlin for many years now and she's done commendable work on the Green Committee, so I just wanted to say, to thank her and to say that she'll be missed.
Thank you. Very nicely said. Additional discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or propose nay. Please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith, aye.
Thank you. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Very much. Hey, Mr. Tierney. That's big section seven. That's all you.
Yeah, we'll be brief. Thank you again. So one of the items I discussed with Casper is we had kind of gotten away from a past practice of having pictured or photo taken of the seated elective or selectman. So I believe in the flavor of that, it's your, it's your choice, but I think that's something we probably should continue. I don't know if there's anybody that doesn't agree, but the photographer reached back out to us. Tanya Nima reminded me to put this, at least to you guys, for a nod. What we normally do is during one of the budget workshops at the Douglas Library, we would get there a little bit earlier and go upstairs in the old part of the library and have the photos taken there. And Donna normally arranges that if that's something you want to continue to do.
I, I think we should, but does anyone disagree? The downside is I, my suits, I don't, the jacket's the only thing that still fits, so. We got to adjust.
We'll just put the back of the shirt so that it buttons in the front.
But obviously, as a reminder, I, a little tongue-in-cheek there, but obviously, we, we want to present ourselves in a formal fashion for that photo to be consistent with how we should be represented in the town hall. So it is, I joke, not about the fact that I have a problem with my suits. That's actually true. But it is when, just a reminder, it will be, we do want to have a formal attire for the photo. So just. Okay, great. Thank you. In?
Okay, so we're going to move forward with that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have one in, so this is the last one we did. And that was the one where we had to make Mark.
Oh, that's right. You photoshopped Mark, yes.
That's Mark Rivera and Scott Leslie's tie.
Okay.
So we'll try to get the prior board at the same time.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll leave it up to you to organize. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then also under the Town Manager's Report, of course, we're doing budget reviews at all the town departments. We did some today. We're going to do some Monday and then hope to wrap that up the middle of the weekend. We're so crunching numbers. Hopefully, you all saw my emails to the Superintendent of RAM. We received his budget. You know, we saw at least, you know, with the shift in the levy and then the, his budget himself with, with the increase to the CIP. So I've been in conversation with him. He responded back again today and it looks like they're going to try to move the needle already in, in our favor as, at least as much as you can. So that'll come out when he presents to Marlboro next week, but the dialogue's open and we're working together to try to get that number down. So that's the topic of the month, actually. So we'll be doing that. That's taking up most of our time. As everybody, well, should know, we received the appeal on the Dollar General. So the town attorney will be reviewing that. And that's something he will be talking with myself and the Planning and zoning Commission. As information develops, if that's something the Board of Selectmen wants to have added for an agenda item, I would suggest that we put that on as an executive session.
Yeah, it's a great point, Andy. It absolutely, because it's in a legal environment now, we really should refrain from speaking about it and defer to the Town Manager's Office and also our attorney, but I would, speaking for the Board, I would think at some point, an executive session might be helpful for us to, as it develops.
Yeah, I think it's a little premature. There's not much to talk about right now because they're just reviewing the information that was set and, and what, what they're looking for. But at the same time, the same direction has been given to the Town Planner and the Board of, the Planning and Zoning Commission to, well, if this is something you're going to add as a topic, it should be done in executive session.
Yes, we should stop talking about it publicly and respect the process. Thank you for that.
Right along those lines, I will be attending along with the Town Attorney Council later, an FOI hearing on March 4th in Hartford. From the Friends of the Douglas Library, more specifically from Mr. Tim Howard, has filed a complaint that we did not comply with his request for the information that he was seeking. I had a conversation with our attorney and we feel that we did everything in our power to get him what we were able to do. And we had seven correspondents stating that and the, so filed. So we'll go up there and we'll, we'll keep you posted on how we do there. But it's unfortunate. And then, as I stated a little bit earlier before the meeting, it looks like we finally got some movement with between Eversource and DOT to get these lights, hopefully, within this month energized and Route 316 and 66 and the crosswalk in operation. So that took some, some skilled emails, but I think we've, we've gotten some movement finally. So and hopefully, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. I know I brought that up a couple meetings ago.
Yeah, but again, a reminder that the delay is not specific to anything the town did.
No, no, not at all. And that's, that's, you know, pretty much what's been on the plate. So that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
So that moves us to section eight, which is old business. Mayor Rescue Plan, state and local recovery funds update. I don't think we have anything of this juncture, Donna, unless you needed to. That moves us to AB, which is Department of Public Works Action Committee update. I will provide a brief update and I'll also I'll do the best I can with that. And but please indulge me if, if I have not properly provided an update, which will be brief. I'll defer to Mal, who's here, and actually, Richard Steiner, who's really leading a lot of this, a lot of this detail that I'm going to summarize, but I do welcome, Richard, you to comment if you feel there's something additional that you'd like to add, just so the Board is fully updated. So basically, this is brief, but the next steps is the RFP is, is over to the attorney, which in essence, he has to review that. As mentioned in the previous meeting, we have identified four firms that we want to take the next steps with. And once that document's approved by the attorney, then it will go to those four firms and and then they'll take their process to respond. And, and just in summary, probably this is definitely a, a March item, I think, just based on the process in terms of when we'll have additional information just because of, of this process. I don't have an exact date. I don't know if Richard or Mal, but if any, you want to add on the, on the date. I know I'm being vague with March. I would say a few weeks is probably safe. Richard, do you think that's realistic?
Yes, just for the record, Richard Steiner, 330 West Street. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the next update to the Board of Selectmen will be in March. I mean, the operative factor here is when we get the RFP back from Town Attorney and then, then the process will be turned back to the committee to get the, the fee proposals out to the four firms. In addition to which, the committee spent a lot of time going through the RFQs from those four firms and they, they, they zeroed in on some very specific questions that they want the four firms to answer when we bring them in for interviews. So that, that process will begin as soon as we can get the fee proposal approved by Town, Town Council.
Thank you very much. And again, that this committee will bring forward a recommendation. It's not a decision, it's a recommendation, which then goes to Andy in the Town Manager's Office and ultimately will be presented to the Board of Selectmen. So it's a recommendation, but that is just a timeline that I thought was important to provide an update on. So that's, that's what I have unless, Mal?
No, Richard didn't.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Okay, moves us to HC, Town Manager's Evaluation. Tiffany and Keith are leading the organization of that effort. So that's, it's ongoing. But is there anything, Keith or Tiffany, wish to offer in terms of an update or just that it's, I know it's ongoing and you're doing some, you know, doing a bunch of work, but anything else you'd like to add to that?
I'll, I'll let Tiffany take the lead. She has more experience with it, having been through a couple, couple more than me.
Sure.
Sure. So basically, I'm pulling together the form that the Selectmen will fill out to provide their individual evaluation and those evaluations are shared with Keith and I and we discuss them. And we will also need Andy from you, your personal self-assessment as it relates to your goals. If you could get that to us as soon as possible, that would be great. But that's where we're at with that. We're prepping the paperwork. We're going to send it out to the Selectmen very, very soon and we can go from there.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Tierney, that moves us to AT.
Yes. What I've been waiting for. This is approved the 2025 steep grant application. The Town Planner, Matt Bordeaux, I think he's with us here, is currently preparing a steep grant application for Amston Village Water Main Extension Project in the amount of $665,000. And then the Main Street Sidewalk Gap Closure Project in the amount of $335,000. Summaries of the projects are attached. The grant deadline is February 20th, 2025. If the steep grants are successful, final acceptance of the grants and potential matching funds may be required. A special town meeting for approval. Hebron Town Charter, Section 303G, and then there's a proposed resolution below.
Keith, would you be so kind as to read the resolution?
Yep.
Sorry, I didn't even put some.
No, no, you're good. I moved ahead a page. Sorry. Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the Small Town Economic Assistance Grant 2025 Grant Round Applications. First for Amston Village Water Main Extension Project in the amount of $665,000. And secondly, the Main Street Sidewalk Gap Closure Project in the amount of $335,000. And authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to submit the 2025 steep grant applications to the State of Connecticut Office of Policy and Management.
Thank you. And prior to any additional discussion from the Board members, Matt, is there anything you wish to add? I don't feel like I have to, but is there anything you wish to add relative to?
I, I don't think so. I'm Matt Bordeaux, Town Planner, for the record. So the priority, as we discussed in the last meeting, was the project to extend the water main on North Pond Road, the one titled Amston Village Water Main Extension Project. That it'd be our first priority. The town is eligible to apply for up to $1 million. We'll receive no more than that. So because we know we have a series of sidewalk gaps or extensions we'd like to complete at some time in the future, figured it wouldn't be too heavy a lift for me to prepare applications to that effect. So we'll take a crack at it, but the emphasis again will be on the Amston Water Main Project.
Any discussion for the Board?
No, sounds great.
Claudia, Tiffany, no? Okay. All right, resolutions in red. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, opposed, nay. Please note, excuse me, if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith, aye.
Thank you.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Thank you, Claudia.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper. Aye. The resolution passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Tierney, and thank you, Matt. Moves us to nine on our agenda, which is new business. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the first glance. This is going to be FYI, 2025-2026 CIP Budget Review to Include Elementary School Roofing Project Funding. So some of these numbers may have changed a little bit because we've got some information as most recent as this morning, I believe, right?
And we'll be on the. Yes, and we, it is displayed on the screen, the revised motions or the revised information.
Information. So we're not looking for.
But we did hand out tonight new, new CIP information.
Although, unfortunately, we're not looking for a vote tonight.
Okay.
So it's, it's your first glance. So we'll get through this and then we can look at the what was requested from the department heads in the total and what we've narrowed it down to, and then some possible underfunding mechanisms to be discussed, but let's just get this in the view of the Selectmen. So the fiscal year 25-26 CIP Budget Review to Include Elementary School Roof Projects Funding and the Capital Improvement Plan attached prescribes to Board of Selectmen's Review the Town Manager's CIP Budget Recommendation by February 15th and finalize the CIP Budget and a five-year plan by March 1st for the inclusion in the upcoming fiscal year budget. Attaches to Town Manager's Fiscal Year 2025-26 Recommended CIP Budget totaling $3,223,439, which I think we're going to update that number, but along with recommendations for funding sources. So a total of $9,588,473 in department head requests were received for the fiscal year 2025-26. The Public Building Committee, in conjunction with the Hebron Board of Education, have been working on the roofing project for the Gill Hill and Hebron Elementary Schools. Has recently been determined that it would be best to do the Hebron Elementary School. Will first, yes?
They're two separate things.
You want me to stop?
Yeah, we should do CIP.
Okay, all right. So Donna made a point. Instead of me going through the whole page, we're going to stop there. And we could get diving into the CIP and then we could get into.
That will be the most.
We'll suppose about the roofs. Yeah, once again, I, you don't need to. On the, on the other motion.
At this point, we, we can start talking about.
Right. And so in the packet, you, you will, you will see the list of the projects and the amounts. So historically in the past, the CIP number, a good number for CIP is anywhere from $900,000 to like $1,201,300 for, for projects. In this CIP, you're going to see a request for a match for a roof for the school, which is about $1.5 million. So that's one of the biggest drivers. And then you can see the rest of the stuff on the list. So we have the Hebron Board of Ed, who roofed at the 1545. Yeah, the rescue pumper. We're looking, we're hoping to get some funding from the state, bonding, so we're looking for the rest of that by 50, $550,000. The road resurfacing, which is every year, our largest fixed assets, $340,470. They're looking to replace a six-wheel dump truck in 2005. Douglas Library Parking Lot Paving, we were holding off until we did the bridge and then we have some other grant money. We're going to work with the planner in conjunction with that. They're also looking for a street seaper or at least a portion of it to be funded this year at $130,000. That's also a 1999. The Hebron Green Design Services, it's a steep grant match for $100,000. And we changed that number, didn't we? Isn't that going to be like $60,000?
That's a, that's a separate line item. This is the current steep grant.
Okay. All right. So that's, that remains at $100,000. Then there's the Horton House Improvements from the Facility Study. There's $92,800. The Fire Department's looking to replace an ambulance stretcher and stretcher lift. Those are $77,840. I believe that's two. And the Parks and Recreation is looking to do a master plan for $75,000 and the Horton, I'm sorry, the Hebron Sidewalk Design Services, steep grant match. That's the $60,000. And then the Senior Center Parking Drainage Repaving Expansion. This will be the second year funding for the $32,500, which comes up to that total of $3,463,212. So I think, before I turn it over to the Board members for questions, is I think I would, I would assume that everybody knows that probably a $3 million CIP budget wouldn't get approved in the, in the booth. So what I'm suggesting to do as these come through and, and they're such large projects, like I said, a million five for a match for a, almost a $3 million school roof. The town has paid off a lot of its debt. So what I'm going to suggest, and I wouldn't have it for you tonight because it's a long process, but what I would propose is we consider the projects themselves when it comes time, but with some alternate funding mechanisms, possibly a short note or possibly some bonding with some other bigger projects. We're going to be talking with the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance about in upcoming meetings. And get that in place. We wouldn't have that, you know, it would, it would be outside of the budget. So I would lower that down. So I would, I would anticipate, you know, grabbing some of the bigger items out of this to get to that. I would suggest to the Board that we get the CIP more down to that realistic number that they're used to seeing in the booth. Probably the $1.2 or $1.3 million and have to come up and, and fund some of these other things, not on the backs of the taxpayers, because that's, that's a big jump from where we normally are at. I'll, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and open it up for questions.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your bringing this forward and ultimately, I think we need to be focusing on what we need. And then as opposed to necessarily, you know, we have to balance what the public is interested in. But also, we have to be honest about what we need. And, and we have to figure out how to bring that forward so the public knows. And then again, as you said, how best to address that. That is from a funding perspective. So I'll open it up for discussion. Anyone?
Sure. All right, as much as I'm not always a big fan of bonding because it's still money that has to get paid back. With our potential bonding rates, what do you think right now would be our potential interest rate on a bond?
We would get reevaluated at the time we're going to go bond. They would look at certain things to update our bonding. We had enjoyed a triple A bond rating. But I would leave that up to the you know, the financial moeys to, they would reassess them at the time of borrowing the money. So I wouldn't want to speculate because I'm not sure, but I would hope that it would at least stay in the A double A. I'm not sure if we're ever going to see triple A again. I mean, we had a lot more money in the bank back then. But we got a lot less debt, but unfortunately, we don't have a lot of new economic development. We had a lot of the the way we raise our revenue with tax dollars on the backs of homeowners, and that just happens to be the makeup of Hebron, so that weighs a lot into their decision.
Well, that being said, I still think especially for the school projects, I would like to try to literally group these, you know, these school projects, and I think there's other things that are possibly coming down the pike as a bond package. And then we could also include, and we could put it under safety or whatever, and try to get maybe even a couple other safety oriented projects incorporated into that, which would stretch out the payment over a large number of years and get rid of some very expensive projects that we're looking at. And that would help to get it within the 1.3, 1.5 million dollar CIP package, which historically usually is accepted by the voters.
So Andy, just maybe just a little reminder in terms of how the bonding works, if we were to maybe, is there flexibility to expand bonding later? And how does that work?
Yeah, so there's different options. You could take out a short note or a loan, depending on what the interest rates are. Normally, if you want to bond something out, it's, I wouldn't suggest, I'm sure Lori probably, Lori being our finance director, wouldn't suggest bonding less than $10 million because there's a cost to doing that. And I'm thinking with all the projects we have, we'll probably reach that. But yes, it's a great question. You could, you could roll the interest into a new bond, knowing we've got possibly a public works project coming up at some point, or you could combine the two and roll one into the other, or we would be upfront with the bonding, you know, agencies at the time and tell them, we want to do this now, but we're looking for long-term to possibly do whatever that number is when we get it.
Okay, so yeah, I think alternative funding, it just generally is a good topic for us to start discussing, obviously. Where finance others have to be involved, but I appreciate you bringing that up. Additional discussion, Keith? Anything you want to add?
I think, I think Dan pretty much covered my same concern.
Okay. Tiffany?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think, I think Andy, I agree with you. I think it's pretty clear $3.4 million CIP budget will not pass muster in the voting booth. Guess the only additional item I want to mention right now is I think as we as we look at all of these capital projects coming up, and as we look at our grant list, and as we look at, you know, people leaving town and not enough new business coming in, I think this is where the board and, you know, consequently, the town really needs to make economic development a focus to try to balance out the amount that we're collecting from property taxpayers, any amount we collect from businesses in town. Other than that, I think this is a good start to an important discussion, and we'll continue it through March. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, would you like to add anything to the discussion?
Yes, I would. Thank you. So I have three questions with respect to what was presented tonight, the list of the projects. I seem to recall in 2024, we talked about a a grant that Keith Starkle had submitted for a stretcher. Is this in addition to or replacement of that particular stretcher grant? Was it ever approved?
So, good question, and thank you for that. I hope I answered correctly, and I think I am. I think this is a lateral. We didn't receive that grant yet, but I don't think we heard that we weren't going to not receive that yet. So this is a conjunction in case we don't receive it. I believe that's the correct answer. So if we were to get that grant, then of course we wouldn't have to expend these monies, but I believe he's applied for that.
I think he applied for it last year and didn't get it. I think he applied again this year and we're waiting.
Yeah, so I think we didn't get it last year, but we reapplied both for that and the extra money for the fire truck and a federal grant. But at the same time, we're showing them in the CIP as well. So great question.
Okay, so the, the grant that he spoke to of last year in '24, that was declined, is what you're saying. He reapplied again in '25 for the same grant, or maybe the same dollar amount, but a different grant for the stretcher?
I believe it's the same grant. Again, we reapplied. We didn't make, it comes in rounds, same thing with the federal money for the apparatus. So we weren't successful, but they come around, apparently have that each year, so it was the same grant that was reapplied.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you for that. My second question is on Horton House. So the investments that we make on, you know, physical investments in our town. Is there any way that we can anticipate getting some kind of revenue from, say, a Horton House of some sort? And forgive me, I don't know too much about the Horton House, but is it possible that a building like the Horton House can be used to rent out for like functions, for organizations, or private events? Something to that effect, that we could somehow get some kind of revenue stream from places like the Horton, the Peters House?
I think you're thinking of the Peters House. The Horton House is the structure that houses planning and zoning, building department, that aspect, those entities.
Town offices.
The town office.
Horton House is here, the white building across the program. Are you aware that's not the Peters House? Are we correct in that, or?
Oh, you made the distinction, and I appreciate that. So the Horton House is simply town offices, and it wouldn't be available or open to the public for any kind of?
Right.
Wouldn't have enough space.
But what they, what they do do, and I don't know if you're aware of this or not, the revenue that they generate over there is through permits and fees. I mean, they do do that. And I'm not sure if that helps or doesn't help your question, but yeah, it's all town offices. There's no extra space to conduct any type of outside activities that could generate.
Gotcha. Very good. Thank you for that. And then the last thing, I just wanted to echo also Tiffany's sentiments, and for myself also is a concern. How we need to start thinking about how we can encourage economic growth vis a vis new businesses to town going forward, making it more of a priority. You know, there's a lot of, lot of lists, like list items here that we're, that money is going out, but we need to talk more about and focus in more on money coming in. So that's something I definitely still want us to talk about, to focus on, and not, and not let go of that focus going into '25 and beyond.
Thank you. This is a little off topic, but since you both mentioned it, I did meet with the head of the EDC earlier this week, and she's looking forward to bringing some ideas and an update to the Board of Selectmen, to your point, both Claudia and Tiffany, to start the dialogue of how we can focus on the things that you mentioned and how we can do it with collaboration and unity across the enterprise of Hebron and all different boards and commissions. So had a very productive meeting, and that will be on a future agenda. I would think very relatively soon, when it's appropriate with the budget season, but she's going to move very quickly with some some summary comments that she wants for us to review. And so that is in the works, at least that first step of let's connect with the EDC and really understand how we can work collaboratively to that goal. So that is in the works.
And one thing I want to add to that, Mr. Chairman. So with respect to the EDC, them coming in and giving presentations and all things of that nature, I would really also like to focus us on having something of measurement. So something that, you know, they can report back and say XYZ occurred, completed, et cetera, as opposed to having sort of esoteric conversations, like let's talk about reality and deliverables and something that we can actually put, put to use in the coming months.
We would obviously, we'd coordinate that with the town because obviously that's, and Matt, but yes, one of the things that Shell said to me was that she expects to accomplish a lot. So yes, I would imagine those measurables will be brought forward. But again, we'd have to coordinate the specifics with the town and the appropriate town departments, but absolutely, I'm fully a fan of measurables. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Also, I'd like to add, I see some for sale or at least under deposit signs for some of the commercial slash residential properties along 85. I do know that there have been plans submitted for those properties. Where they are, I'm assuming they're in the hands of planning and zoning, wetlands, and all of those. So hopefully, these entities will look at the, on those properties, hopefully favorably, so that those projects can get you know, underway also. So there is things happening. I don't think we, I know I don't know a lot of what is happening, but I do know that there are ventures out there that are trying to develop pieces of property in town.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion, and thank you, Andy, for putting that together for us to continue to start to assess the CIP. Are you comfortable forward with the next component of the, and the motion associated with the roof?
I am.
Okay, anybody else? Good moving on at this juncture? Do you have any, Claudia, good moving on? Okay, let's go.
Okay, thank you. The Public Building Committee, in conjunction with the Hebron Board of Education, have been working on the roofing projects in Gillian Hill School, Hebron Elementary Schools. And recently been determined that it will be best to do the Hebron Elementary School first in the summer of 2025 for several reasons. PC attached, the request is for the currently approved CIP Elementary School Roof Funding from Gillian Hill School in the amount of $504,594 to be reassigned and designated for the town's share of the Hebron Elementary School Roof Project. The Board of Ed working to submit a grant application to the state as soon as the town's share of funding is in place. The town's share of the Gillian Hill School Roof Funding is included as a request in the fiscal year 2025-2026 CIP Budget in the amount of, and I believe it's now up to one point, it's on this list, over 1.5445,678. And once again, I believe it's done under being reviewed, but that's what it is. And then below there is a proposed Resolution One, and then a proposed Resolution Number Two. Any questions from me before you move forward? Or Mel?
I just want to verify under Resolution Two, and I know we haven't read it yet. Those are the accurate numbers, correct?
Those are the accurate.
Okay. All right, so are we going to take one at a time? Yeah, okay. Would you, you sit down again?
Sure. Proposal, proposed Resolution Number One. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorized the CIP Funding in the amount of $504,594 previously approved for the Gillian Hill School Roof Project be reassigned and designated to be used to satisfy the town's share of the Hebron Elementary School Roof Project.
Okay, so that resolution has been read. Proposed Resolution Number One, before we open it up for discussion, I'll turn it over to Mel if you want to provide any context or?
The only, the only thing I can add to the numbers you have in front of you is that we're on a very short leash here. The reason we switched from Gillian Hill to the Hebron Elementary School was because there are, the Gillian Hill School is more than a roof. It's asbestos abatement. It's also patching holes in firewalls that were left undone when previous projects were done up there. There were just too many things to put together to be able to do it this year, as well as the fact that there was, there is not enough money already approved in CIP to cover the town's local share. The state requires that, or grants for public school buildings, that the town prior or along with submission of the application have approved local funds. The local funds are calculated by the total cost of the project multiplied by our reimbursement rate, which is 5.55.36%. So we, we will get back $470,111, assuming nothing else is found. Now, in the price that you see, there are contingencies. If those contingencies are reimbursable, which 99% of the time they are, we would get additional funds back. But in order to apply for this grant, we have to have these funds approved, number one. Number two, just for your understanding and more for the the public's understanding, these funds have already been approved in CIP. We're just reassigning the project for them, and I know you folks understand it, but people out in the audience may not. If you have any other questions, Richard's also with me today. I'm more the finance person, but he can talk to the project more if you have questions on the project. We'd be more than happy to address your issues.
Just turn it over to the board. Dan, anything?
No, I mean, I understand the process. I do know that at one point in time, the state was very adamant about getting going on, you know, HVAC systems and things like that, and then the monies dried up.
That's put on hold.
I'm hoping that there's monies in the state for roof projects and things like that.
There is.
Okay.
Is that it?
I'm good.
Tiffany, anything you wish to?
Not this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Claudia.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Resolution has been read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith said aye.
Thank you.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. Resolution passed unanimously. Mr. Larson, if you would be so kind as to move to the proposed Resolution Number Two?
Sure. Proposed Resolution Number Two, be it resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen that the Hebron Elementary School Roof Renovations be funded for the local share in the amount of $664,594 of the total project cost of $1,134,705 requested by the Hebron Public Schools in its school construction grant application and educational specification.
Resolution Number Two has been read. Any additional discussion on this topic or this specific resolution? Gentlemen? Dan?
Awesome.
Keith?
Good.
Thank you. Tiffany, no? Claudia? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the proposed Resolution Number Two, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
I.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Tiffany, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia and Peter Casper, aye. Proposed Resolution Number Two, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mel.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Tierney?
Item 9B, approved 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant Application. State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Emergency Management Performance Grant Application for the period from October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. Deadline is March 30th, 2025. This is an annual grant app. This is the annual grant application, which provides funding for the emergency management operations for the town of Hebron. Paul Bancroft, Emergency Management Director, has requested the board adopt the following resolution. And there's proposed resolutions below.
Okay. Tiffany, would you be so kind?
Sure. Resolved that the town of Hebron may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And further resolved that Andrew J Tierney, as Town Manager of the town of Hebron, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Hebron, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be. and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. This authorization is for the EMPG grant for the performance period October 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2025.
Thank you, Tiffany. Discussion?
Good.
Tiffany? Good, probably good. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Tiffany, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Claudia, Peter Casper, aye. The proposed resolution passes unanimously. Mr. Tiffany, that moves us to 9C.
9C on the agenda is approve AHM fiscal year 2025, 26 budget municipal formula. That's as opposed AHM Youth and Family Services FY fiscal year 2025, 26 municipal formula along with proposed budget detail. AHM Oversight Committee was scheduled to meet earlier today, February 6th, to approve the municipal formula. And I believe that was Mr. Casper and Mr. Lecter, and I'm sure you could fill in the board a little bit more on that before we go to the proposed motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney. And this will also serve, just for community, just for practical purposes, my liaison report, because I am the liaison. So please note that I'm not going to cover it twice if you're starting to worry. Okay. So yes, so today was the, so I'm going to read the motion and then I'll provide a quick update. To open it up then for discussion. So moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve Hebron's share of the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 Andover Hebron and Marlboro Youth and Family Services budget in the amount of $331,034 and include this amount in the town of Hebron's fiscal year 2025 to 2026 budget. Motion has been read. Just again, I'll provide a quick, I'll jump in first for discussion and then obviously we can, we can go from there. So yes, I did attend the meeting today with Mal along with representatives from Andover and Marlboro, as well as board members and executives from AHM staff. As you can see in the, in the detail that was provided, they, they went through quite a bit of detail and did a really a wonderful job of summarizing both the fiscal impacts on the town and how the formulas is, is arrived at. And some historic views to sort of understand the trajectory in which these changes, these increases are going along the line. And more importantly, also took some time to go through some of the services and programs they provide. And a wonderful reminder of a terrific organization that has brought so much benefit to our community. And one of the things that resonated with me dramatically was, there was initially some thought that after COVID, you would see less of a need for mental health services. And that is not even close to being accurate.
Yeah.
So I think they had, I think they expect about four, 500 additional needs for that. And then when you think about the, the presence they have in our school system, the availability in our community. I did ask about future needs, because if you look at the budget nuances year over year, we're a little bit higher this year. It's, they put forward a 5% change. If, if you look at the math for Hebron, it's a little closer to six based on our share. But ultimately, I've seen consistency, three, four, five, somewhere in that low single digit changes. And I had asked, are there any larger concerns that we may, not, not that we'd be surprised, that maybe we were anticipating, or were, were some of those increases tempered just to get approval, but ultimately there might be some pressures. And there's always a need for staff there. There's the mental health professionals are very difficult to attract. There's a, there's quite a few in the private sector. This is obviously a nonprofit, so there's differentiation and, and compensation and whatnot that can put pressure. And, and so there's always a need for staff. And, and there was a reference made to potentially some space issues because they fill up that space and then some, they have to share office space. There's the need for more, a larger facility to accommodate the programs and the things that are provided to our community, not just mental health, but all the myriad of programs that are provided. So we went through that in, in detail. Our share obviously is the largest, the largest, the share is made of, a point in time where the educational the number of students is at a point in time is, is calculated, like she called December 6th and said, how many students? And that's, it's not something happened on December 10th or 12th, or it's a point in time and then a population. And then the calculation is developed and then our ultimate share is, it results from that. And that's where this number is reflected. And if you thought about the services provided, we're getting somewhere in the neighborhood of about 60% of the cost that it would normally require. And as a reminder, there's probably, there's a myriad of required services that we have to make available to our students and our community. So we would be paying those independently of this at a much, much higher rate because we're mandated by state statute to provide a myriad of services. And if you look at the 40-year plus track record of AHM, we are very fortunate to have this organization in, in town and the impact that they're having on our community. So with that said, based on what was presented, I, I personally am comfortable with recommending this, this number and approving this number. And obviously, but I'll turn it over to the board for further discussion or questions or comment. I'll start with Keith.
I feel like everybody's saying stuff before me tonight because I, I couldn't agree more.
Sorry.
Like, I.
I went to the.
But, um, no, I, I mean, I guess just to take up some airtime to reiterate what, what Pete says. I know having worked, you know, on the school board and, and being involved in the schools and, and my own family, taking advantage of AHM services while attending Hebron schools and still at Ram School. AHM, we really do get a lot of value for, for what we pay them. And it's a fantastic organization and I hope that, you know, we have a great relationship for many, many years to come. And honestly, like you said, about the 60% mark, we are, we are getting a lot for our money here. So I'm, I'm all in.
Thank you, Dan.
Without going into it, I echo both of your comments. It's definitely well worth the money we're spending.
Okay, Tiffany?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo what's been said and just to reiterate that I, I think the mental health services they provide are critically important. I think that today's children face a lot of additional stressors in addition to the COVID catch-up that, you know, perhaps we did not experience growing up. So I fully support paying our share and I think AHM is a great organization that provides needed services for the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Claudia. Would you like to add anything?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, I would, I would say that the, the investment that we make in AHM, the return that we get is far more than just the dollars and, and also just AHM contributing to the great sense of community that we have here. You know, and we live in a town that's not very large and we don't have a lot of amenities like larger towns around us. But AHM is certainly a jewel and we should continue to invest. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion has been read. Appreciate all the thoughtful comments. And we move forward to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper. Excuse me, the proposed, proposed motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Tierney, that moves us to our draft agenda for our next meeting.
Yes, so anything you want on there, of course, we, even the CIP on there, anything different than what's on there, please get it to us. We can add it.
Thank you so much. That moves us to 10 on our, excuse me, I'm sorry. Now, he, was there any other new business, Mr. Tierney, anything you wish to bring for the board that hasn't?
I do not. I mean, we do have to set up that. We got a correspondence from the chairperson of the Board of Finance looking to get together and talk about long, long-range planning, some possible projects that could be funded in another mechanism. So I think we have to bring them into the the loop sooner than later. And it asked some questions about WPCA. I've got the WPCA coordinator responding directly back. I think you were CCing on that.
Yes.
As well, but I think it's time we, we sit down and make sure we're on the, you know, the same page moving forward into this very difficult budget season.
Yeah, no question. It's going to be a challenge. And, and is that an agenda item for the next meeting? Or is it, you see this more of a workshop or do we add it to the agenda?
I'm going to reach out to Diane and see how she'd like to do it. I mean, she, she's the one that reached out and I think. She's on the, on the meeting? I mean, we could ask her now.
You are, IND. Would you like to, are you thinking about this as just joining us at our next meeting? Or would you see this more as a workshop for the next step?
If Mal is still here too, I think we were open to anything that you wanted to do.
Okay.
Mal still there?
No, I'm sorry. He left. It's, he reminded us it was his wife's birthday, so he didn't stay.
Oh, good for him. But yeah, we were open to anything you wanted to do. So whatever your preference is.
Okay. What do you, where is everyone on?
I would like to, I would like to try to get some of these answers or questions at least out there prior to our budget deliberations. I think it's very important that, I, I think it's going to be an incredibly tight year. I think probably one of the tightest years I've been involved with in, what, by 16, whatever it is, numbers of years here. And I think we, we need as much input as we can before we get into the deliberations.
All right. So if I may, maybe we can, I can suggest that we put it as a placeholder on our agenda. Make sure there is a spot specific to the agenda. And then we can continue to think about how best to go about this. And I know Diane, I put you on the spot. So but let's at least get it on the agenda. So we have a formal position or a formal item. And then we can continue to discuss how best and the time to approach it and the timing, right? Dan, you might take, we need some more information first before, I don't know, but let's at least put it on the agenda.
We'll do that. And in the meantime, we'll try to answer some of the questions and we'll get some of the projects that we're considering. And we'll have the finance director also reach out to our bond council and see what would be our best avenue to. First of all, we're looking for, for projects. We'll see what the totals are. What would be the best way to do that?
Okay, that sounds good.
Keep, even offline, we'll keep and the board of finance people involved in that. So then we can do the workshop or wherever you want to proceed.
And thank you Diane for joining us. And I'll thank you in advance for you and your board's collaboration as we move towards, as Annie said, a difficult budget season with a lot of moving parts and a lot of expenses to, for reconcile. So thank you for joining us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. That moves us to our consent agenda. And I know, Keith, I'm sorry, this isn't an exciting one, but I gave you up some more airtime. Could you? Consent agenda, please.
Sure. There's no tax refund, so just move for the approval of minutes from the February.
No, actually.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm looking at.
You're probably looking at.
Looking at the agenda for the next one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no worries.
A move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. The approval of minutes for January 16th, 2025 regular meeting and the list of attached tax refunds.
Okay. And as noted in the agenda, if any board members wishes to pull any of this separately for discussion, please note now. Note that now. And if not, okay. All right. I will move forward to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Tiffany, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. That moves us to 11 on the agenda, which is liaison reports. Assuming you don't want to hear a repeat of HMU services, I will move to Hebron Board of Ed and Tiffany, if you'd like to provide an update.
Sure. So the board is currently reviewing the 25, 26 year budget. They've already gone through the superintendent board, special education, Gillian Hill and Hebron Elementary School departmental budgets. And the remaining departments will be reviewed at the next meeting. So they're, they're well into their budget process. Thank you.
Thank you. For the finance, Mr. Larson?
Uh, no report.
Thank you. Land acquisition, Mr. Pettit?
I have something.
Awesome. Take as much time as you need, brother.
So the land acquisition board did meet last night. They covered a couple of, you know, basic housekeeping items as far as getting things together for things like publication and the Hebron views. They also discussed, obviously, the upcoming budget packet and their presentation to us in March. They are looking at a couple of properties that they have heard might be coming up in the near future, but there were no definitive maps or anything, anything to look at or, or offers on the table. But they are always, you know, looking to expand the, the greenways in Hebron, which are, are frequented quite often by our residents and outside people coming in for tourism. They also talked briefly, Planning and Zoning had approved the dog park going in. So there was discussion on that as well. But that was basically it.
Okay. Thank you. Ram Board of Ed, Claudia?
Just unmuting myself. So yes, I do have some, some items to report back. Obviously, a long theme of budgets, so they have started their budget process. And of course, we are, we are all experiencing all the difficulties with the upcoming budget season, and they are no stranger to that as well. Some, some good news actually from the Ram Board of Ed, they approved the town of Columbia to be able to, for families who are interested in sending their children to the Ram schools. They approved that and they had an open house recently to invite Columbia residents, families and prospective students to come and take a look. And about 25 families attended. So that's pretty impressive. Goes to show that, you know, Regional District Eight has, has a nice reputation outside of, of our three towns. And I mean, if you think about it, 25 families did end up enrolling in the system that has a significant plus as far as revenue goes. So hats off to, to them for thinking outside of the box and, and, and trying to figure out ways in which we are bringing in dollars as opposed to continuing to write those checks. And lastly, they did celebrate a few students who graduated early this year. So their graduation ceremony happened this month or last month in January. So congratulations to those students. Get to have a sprint semester off, I guess. And that's all.
All right. Thank you so much. That moves us to, so on the agenda was just public comment. I'll just reference my earlier statement regarding public comment. And, but not read that again. Don, is there anybody online that wishes to offer a comment?
There's nothing on there.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, although I don't, if you're not next to me, I'm going to defer. Oh, I'm sorry. There's, Dan, you're making a public comment?
Yes, I am. I just want to publicly thank the public works people. They were out, they've been out early in the mornings, late at night, they're out weekends. And I mean, I, I understand that they are being compensated for their time. But at some point in time, it's still tough to be away from your families on nights, weekends and everything else. And they have again shown that we are so fortunate to have such great people.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Very nice. Thank you. Any other public comment from the board members? Rush over here, Dan. I apologize. Hey, Tiffany, if you'd be so kind?
Sure. I moved to adjourn the Board of Selectmen's meeting at 8:08 PM.
Thank you so much. Thank you for those that joined virtually. Thank you for joining us in person. And as always, an opportunity to thank the town and the associated staff for all of your hard work representing our families in our community. So thank you so much. Have a good, if you're driving, be careful. And thank you very much.